Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman. As President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's pre-agenda board meeting. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SAISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month. And most of the items on our agenda this evening will be discussed tonight and voted upon at our regular board meeting. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we do have a public comment item on our agenda that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item that is not on our action agenda or an action item on the agenda an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on the public comment form located at the back of the room. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so that we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time, and comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicate on the form you filled out, and any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. Also, please understand if you offer public comment to the board that they can, we cannot reply to, except to thank you for your comments if the matter has not been posted for discussion. I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, thank you for being here and for your support of SAISD. With that, we do have a quorum this evening. Our entire board team is present, and so if everyone will stand, we will do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the people of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, with that, we are going to move on to item three, which is our public comments, and we're going to start with Sarah Alexander. Topic is Lakeview.
We come to you today to address the lunch issues at Lakeview High School and to discuss how it is a symptom of a much larger problem: inequality. The issues at Lakeview: closing campus, long lines in the cafeteria, running out of food, kids going hungry, lockdown bathrooms, golf carts patrolling the perimeter, overcrowding, and overall unacceptable conditions could have been prevented through better preparation. The district knew they were going to close campus well before the August 5th notification appearance. We have proof going back to July. Decisions to close campus were made during the floods. Children who woke to find their homes filled with water, their lives uprooted, displaced, and readjusting to another new normal now had one more thing to destabilize their world. The north side was disproportionately affected by the floods, yet no one considered how closing campus would affect students who'd survived a tragedy. There's been a lot of press about this, so I don't need to rehash every detail. Instead, I would like to ask for equality and offer solutions. I again ask that we end closed campus lunch at Lakeview. Allow juniors and seniors to leave at lunch and bring back outside vendors or food trucks. They can park down the street, off-campus, like at Central, to reduce overcrowding. Closed campus has been delayed at Central because they do not have the proper infrastructure in place, but as the weeks go by, it's clear that Lakeview doesn't either. Both schools should stay open until they have adequate facilities, then close together equally. Lastly, I would like to bring your attention to this: the map showing the high school attendance zones. This map shows inequality without ever having to put it into words. With this in mind, I would like to offer another solution: redrawing the maps. With enrollment numbers declining year after year, we must ask ourselves if we have the numbers to maintain a 6A school alongside a 4A. We know that both schools have inadequate cafeterias that require renovation, so why not balance the scales now? We have an opportunity to bring equality by creating two 5A schools. Lakeview's been a 5A before, so with the exception of the cafeteria, the infrastructure's in place. If implemented correctly, it would allow for an environment where no one feels less than or othered, both schools are afforded the exact same athletic and educational opportunities, both schools have the proper infrastructure in place, and everyone gets a chance to eat. Until that time, I ask that you stop treating Lakeview as a non-issue. And open campus backup: no portables, no makeshift cafeterias, no more lying to the community. Lakeview has always been treated as less-than, looked down upon for issues of race or socioeconomic status, but discussions were silenced. Through your continued inaction, you are saying the quiet part out loud, and we will no longer be silenced. It is that bad, and we do not feel good about the direction we are going.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. I appreciate your time. Next, we have Ms. Aliyah Carrasco. Topic is Lakeview.
Hello. My name is Aliyah Carrasco, and I hope at least some of y'all recognize me, as I know some of y'all, and I'm on the CTU ambassadors. I'm a student advisory and advisory committing for this SAISD. I'm a counselor, or student advocate for our counseling at Lakeview, and I've met some of y'all to help me in my journey with Taffy. So I kind of understand where y'all have been. Thank you, Vera Gomez. I know you've educated all of us on education in the field and how y'all do. And so, being with that, I respect your decision. I respect the closed campus, but I also respect the facilities to provide for that. I work two jobs, and I've been on free and reduced lunches for years now, and I'm dependent on those, and I hope to eat as, when I get off of school, because I have my home pass, I go straight to work. If I'm not doing that, I'm taking my sisters home, I'm taking my cousin home, and providing for them, helping them. And so, with that, I'm so dependent on the cafeteria food to eat. And thankfully, sometimes I don't have to depend on that because my mother has helped me get the tools to pack a lunch. And so, on the days that I don't, I get to eat my lunch, and the days that I don't pack my lunch, I have to eat cafeteria food. Every Thursday, orange chicken is provided. I love orange chicken, and last year, I don't know if you've seen our food plates, but last year I got two scoops of chicken and one scoop of rice. Due to overcrowding and not enough food, this year I get two scoops of rice and one scoop of protein. I don't feel like that's fair because, once again, I love it, but I just don't think it's enough food for these children. Now, I love vegetables, so I get that, but not everyone likes everything, and they don't get enough of that. And so, I just think that's, I don't think that's right. There's no justification to have not enough food for these children. And being the senior I am, I've been here for four years. I advocate for everything I can within my school, and whether it not be rebelling, whether it be just talking out, or whether it be just being there, I try. And so, I think that even with our overcrowding in our cafeteria, overcrowding in our hallways due to only having the bathroom the last 10 minutes of class in passing periods, not every student is able to get into class in time. I have a couple friends that never get to class in time in a few classes because there's overcrowding, and once the bell rings, you can't use the restroom. And if you need to use the restroom, you have to go to the office, but you only have two passes a day. And I understand that because I understand tardies, I understand absences, and I have talked to teachers where I do understand this has lowered absences and tardies, but it's just not okay to not feed these kids. And I just think it's very, very important that we have the facilities to uphold that, and the same with Central. So, thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Virgil Pasetti. Topic is Leadership, Communication, and Finance.
Hello. My name is Virgil Pasetti, concerned father. I'm sure you've heard a thousand times, you know, actions are louder than words. And, you know, after our last board meeting, seeing students, parents, advocates come up fighting for these kids, what were the two actions? Our superintendent came up, told the news, it's a non-issue, because to him, it is. He's got bigger fish to fry. He's got things to do. He doesn't need to worry about this. It's a non-issue. And what did our two board members do? Our president, our secretary went back and August 25th gave him a raise. So now his salary's $283,000, plus, I don't know, $25,000, $27,000 of TRS funding, plus another $24,000 for his 403B, and if he's entitled to insurance, if he chooses to use our insurance, another $5,600. So that brings us up to total cost of compensation to $338,000. So that's what he thinks of your issues. Y'all are out here fighting for your kids, fighting for nutrition, fighting for room, and you say, you know what, let's go give this guy a raise, and then he can go tell him it's a non-issue. That is horrible, guys. You would think for $338,000 a year that this would be a non-issue because it would have been dealt with appropriately. And when it comes to communication, what do we see? We went from a 71 to a 73, that much closer to a B. But how do we do that? Well, we closed down Austin, which was an F, and we closed down Altaloma, which was our lowest school in the district. So that's how we got ahead. And then we proclaimed that Glenmore went to an A. Well, how did we achieve that? Well, we took all the low-testing Hispanic kids that were in ESL, and we sent them to Bradford because it's already an F, and now Glenmore's an A. And you went from a 71 to a 73 by doing that. Well, thank you for communicating to us that we're that much closer to a B, but no thank you for taking those kids out of Glenmore and sending them to a school that's already an F. Why didn't you leave them at Glenmore? You just want to concentrate all the Hispanic kids at Bradford because it's already an F, so they can't make it any worse? And then these parents come up and say, you're doing the same thing at Lakeview. Actions are louder than words. We see your actions, and your words are all just, I don't want to say untruthful, but it's what you want us to hear. You want us to hear that you're doing great. We're almost a B. Your actions say different. You should be ashamed.
Next, we have Ms. Geneva Rodriguez regarding Lakeview and Lincoln.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for this time. My name is Geneva Rodriguez. I have a son at Lincoln Middle School right now, and his last year, and then I have a son at Glenmore. So I am calling, I'm calling, not calling, I'm coming to speak because I think, as I've said, whenever I ran for the school board, people's perception is their reality, and I think we need to keep that in mind, whether whatever is going on is the truth, their perception is that there is disparage between north side and the rest of the community. And it's really hard when the facts speak. You can't go against what the facts speak. And when students are coming up and saying, I didn't have enough to eat. I have a six-foot, very large eighth grader who was very excited about getting macaroni the other day, and was in line, and was offered a piece of toast with cheese because he ran out of macaroni. And that is supposed to carry him for the rest of the day, up until 5:30 in the evening because he's in student council and he's in a meeting until late. Now luckily, we are blessed, and we are able to provide him with snacks that he can take to school, and we provide him with a breakfast before he leaves, but not every parent can do that, and especially not on the north side. And so, I am not one that wants to come up here and spread division. I think there needs to be unity. We are all one school district, but we need to do something. There needs to be action, and we need to let our actions speak, not just our words. And so, I would love to see, you know, I think two of the easy, I say easy because I'm not in your place, but two of the easy fixes would be to open the campus. Now, I understand the reason for the closed campus is security, and I wholeheartedly stand behind that 100%. However, we can't have students sitting in the hallway. We can't have them sitting outside in the hot sun. We can't have them congregating in the library because we don't have enough place for them to eat. So why not bring the food trucks back? Let the food trucks come back in. You can put them in the back of the school where it's locked, so people can't get in and out, only the food trucks. And then that allows the people that are able to afford for the food trucks to go to a food truck, which allows more people to go through the regular line. So if you're dependent on a regular lunch because you're on free and reduced, that provides more food for them. Now, that might not be possible. Maybe you can't put them in the back, but they were there before, so why can't we have them anymore? I just want answers. Why can't we? And I understand that there might be a food shortage, there might be some other reason why we can't, but we need answers and wholehearted answers that show that we care about everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Next, we're going to move forward with our board updates and reports. Our first report is an update on Lakeview closed campus.
All right. Well, this has been a hot topic, and a lot of input has been given. I've got a few comments to make just in regards to the closure at Lakeview for lunch, and just to highlight a few things, you've heard these before, but some of them may be new. Maybe to clear up some misconception for the board, really, you all know that school nutrition laws guide what we can and can't do on campus. So there can't be competitive foods sold or consumed in the same area where reimbursable meals are sold and consumed. And so, the important thing for the board to know is that the reason food trucks cannot be on campus is because if students purchase those and eat in the same areas that our students who receive cafeteria foods eat, we are in violation of school nutrition laws, and we can be penalized by losing funding for that. That was one of the drivers to remove the food trucks. And, you know, I think it's important that we are compliant, number one. Number two, to recognize that our school nutrition program offers a free breakfast and a free lunch to every student at Lakeview High School. And I haven't done the math, but I'm hoping this will be a good thing financially for our kids and our families. I know that it's important for kids to eat a good meal every day, and as I listen to the conversations about serving and portion sizes, that's something I think that I can follow up with, with our school nutrition program. I feel pretty good about the fact that they're doing their very best. They are good people. They want to do a good job for the kids on that campus and the staff. And so, but some of that, we can follow up and just make sure that kids aren't being short-changed, because as a parent, I wouldn't want my children short-changed with lunch either. So that's something that I'd be glad to do. One of the things that I've done is I've reached out and I've asked for input and feedback from the campus. There are a few things that they've given me as feedback. There's been an improvement in overall attendance in tardies, especially for those returning from lunch, because if you can imagine in the past, tardies coming back from lunch to campus for class were significant. That has virtually gone away. So our classes right after lunch, the feedback I'm getting are, it's been a really good thing academically. Kids are in class on time and ready to go. There's four options for lunch: two free meal lunch lines, a hot meal à la carte, and a grab-and-go. There's still a commitment from the campus, and, you know, kudos to Mr. Ramirez and his staff, but we've got some deli-style tables that are coming to help in the areas where maybe kids are sitting in the hall, which I've been told that's a choice that they've made. But to be sure that they've got an option and an opportunity, we don't want them to feel like they have to. The library is, has been and continues to be a place where students can go for a little more quiet and removed eating area outside of the cafeteria. So some of those improvements are coming. I know that we had, I believe, five board members visit the lunch at Lakeview last week in separate groups, so there wasn't a quorum, but I want to say to the board that I'm listening. I think it's important. I do think it is incumbent upon me to provide a safe and secure campus, and we're trying to do that on all of our campuses. In fact, today, we met at another campus to discuss their safety on campus, and I've visited recently with TEA Safe and Secure Schools, not related to the Lakeview lunch issue, but just an overall conversation of making sure that all of our campuses enjoy a safe and caring environment. So with that being said, really, my charge is to provide that safer environment, better attendance, which we struggle with at the high schools. Attendance, punctuality, making sure that we're capturing that academic day and not missing out on instructional minutes. It's my charge to make sure we do that, and I'm taking that charge seriously. And to make sure that our kids are fed well and provided for. And so, we'll just continue down that path. I've got no intentions of changing course because I believe that we're providing those things, and we're going to get better and better at those things for all of our campuses, Lakeview included. But academically, I said at last meeting, we've got a lot of work to do. And next week, on Thursday, the 18th, the board will hear an update on our academic progress. It's no secret that we've got schools that are struggling, and so the urgency is there to get some things done and make some changes that are significant. If we're going to move the district forward academically, we have to do some hard things. This is one of those hard things. And so, really, that's, those are my comments that I wanted to be sure you heard as a board, but also to invite feedback. I mean, you went to the lunches, and I haven't talked to you all since you've done that, but I'd be interested in knowing what your feedback is on that.
Board comments or questions for Dr. Moran or the admin team?
I'll start with a question. So the portion sizes, who, like, obviously, there's some sort of guidelines by, I guess, USDA or someone, like, how is that, how does that, kind of speak more on that part, just the portion?
I wish I could tell you more about how to determine portion sizes. I don't have the answer for that, but I can get answers to that. Yeah, and I can send those to you.
I actually asked Dr. Ramirez about that when I was at the lunch last Thursday at Lakeview, and he said that the portion sizes are decided by, are determined by the government, by the USDA. So I'm curious about when Leah said that they were smaller this year than they were last year, because I don't know that they've changed. I don't think that they have. So I think that's a really good thing to follow up on, but I specifically asked that because I've heard your complaints online.
Yeah, because I was just asked, because we went, me and Ms. Cardenas went, I guess it was not this last day, but Thursday before, and I think the only concern thing I had was it was, portions were relatively small, especially if you are, can be doing an athletic event or something. I mean, it was, I ate, but I had to get a piece of pizza also because it was not a lot of food. So that was the only thing I saw. To the parents, I, we were, I won't speak, I won't speak for her, but we were at the end of the line. We got there, we were the last two people that were lined up. Now, there were a few kids that came in later, and I think when we sat down, there was a good 25 to 30 minutes left of lunch. So there was plenty of time. There was, there was, I-
Again, this is a meeting of the public, I mean, of the board in public. So no interruptions, please. We're going to try and talk to each other about the meeting, and we'll go from there.
I was going to, I was going to mention before we started interrupting, Mr. Ramirez mentioned that the JV team was not there. So there was about 50 to 100 kids that were not there at lunch. So I think there were probably 300 kids in front of us, 350 kids in front of us, and I feel like the line moved pretty quick, and you could add another 50 to 100 students and had at least, they would have had at least 15 to 20 minutes, which most of the students that I witnessed personally, I feel like almost nobody, when we, when lunch was over, I don't think a single student hadn't eaten. I can't confirm that. Didn't talk to every student, the students we talked to, majority kind of said the same thing you are saying, honestly. They weren't real happy about being on a closed campus. I'm not sure how much that is emotional in the fact that they were stuck at lunch or stuck on campus, or that they weren't actually getting enough food. There were plenty of seats. All I can speak to is the facts. There were plenty of seats when I was there, and I'm not sure of the other board members' opinions, but there were plenty of seats available. It appeared, and some of the students did confirm this, that a lot of the students liked to, they don't like to eat at the tables. They want to eat in halls, they want to eat in the library. They choose where they want to eat. There was not a lack of tables. And I thought the line moved quick. I thought there were plenty of options. The portions were, I mean, they were suboptimal to me. I don't, like I said, I don't know who regulates that part of it. I'm not sure if it's just a serving issue, or if that's what is in the guidelines, because I know there are very strict nutrition guidelines that we have to follow. But I thought Mr. Ramirez, the kids seemed to be very receptive to some of those things, but obviously, they weren't real happy about being on campus, and I think maybe 16-year-old me would have not been happy about it also. I don't know. I think the safety is very important, and I am happy that we can improve in that way. But, and I think to some of the comments like Ms. Carrasco made, there are ways to improve the facilities and still continue the path that we're going on. I think there are ways that we can continue to improve the space. I know I talked to the nutrition team about maybe looking at some new equipment, some other food options that might make it more appealing to be on campus at lunch, and we can talk about that more whenever, you know, as it comes up. But that was my kind of impression when I was there, and I'm curious to see if, you know, what the other people's opinions were.
So, excuse me, like Dr. Mills said, we did go together. Now, I guess I missed the message, but not only was JV out, you had freshman team out and volleyball, and I'm not sure if there was other squads out too. So just, you're looking at over 100 students, right, that were not there, so I couldn't see exactly how the flow went. So I'd like to go back when there's a full campus and see how that works. But while I was there, yes, there was, you know, tables available, but I didn't know that there was that many students, you know, missing. So that's a big deal. Let me see, we're talking about ordering deli-style tables, right? What about inclement weather? How are we going to cover those tables up for the students to be safe? And of course, safety is number one. I don't think anybody in the audience would disagree with that, but the fact of the matter is that we're, you're choosing to close campus when the high school on the other side of town is not, that's not okay. And I'm, I'm sorry. I have more, but I'm not speaking for the applause at all. I'm just speaking on my experience. I'm born and raised here, so this, Dr. Moran, has been going on. Another thing is communication. Why was this, and I need you to have an open mind, please, why was this related to the parents right before school started? I've heard several comments, you knew this was coming, you knew this was coming, but I didn't know when it was coming. I don't think they knew it was coming. To relay a drastic change like this for families a couple of weeks before school starts is not fair, and it's not right either. I agree with allowing the campus to be, we're all about fairness and equality, right? Central's not closed. Lakeview should not be closed either. That's just, that's just, that's what it comes down to. Like I said, I would like to revisit the campus when all the students are there so that I can see how the lunch line flows. As far as portions, that's the district's responsibility to know what portion sizes are for growing young men and women. I could tell you right now, for, especially for athletes or everyday individuals, women, you're looking at three to five ounces of protein off the bat. Now, and men, four, seven, eight, depending on their- that I can see how the lunch line flows. As far as portions, that's, that's the district's responsibility to know what portion sizes are for growing young men and women. I could tell you right now, for, especially for athletes or everyday individuals, women, you're looking at three to five ounces of protein off the bat. Now, and men, four, seven, eight, depending on their size, especially if they're in athletics, they need more. You have to, it's not the parents' responsibility to send snacks. It's our responsibility to adequately feed these students and give them the nutritional needs that they need. We need to know what portion sizes are adequate for girls and boys, young women and young men, especially athletes. We, we need to know that. We can't have a, I'm not sure, answer. This is, this is a big deal. These parents are here for a reason. We have to listen to them. We have to have an open mind. They're not, it's hard to attend a meeting at 5:30 PM as a working parent, but they're here because they're passionate about what's happening. And we can't just sit back and rely on, hear these messages. We have to listen to the families out here, what they're saying, and we should be doing our due diligence and visiting the campus. So, I'm not sure what, what members of the board have not visited, but like I mentioned, we all need to go and see for ourselves. I can keep going and going, but number one, it has to be equal. I think it should be equal across the board, Dr. Moran. This has been going on. I'm 30-plus years old, and it's always been the same thing. Lakeview gets the short end of things over Central. Why? I'm not sure. I can only assume, but you know what assuming gets you. So, we, another thing that, the restroom breaks, I talked to, to you, sir, about the restroom breaks, and when did that change happen? Were the parents notified ahead of time also about the change in the restroom break? My son, I picked him up the other day, and he was about to pee his pants. "Pops, what's wrong? My teacher wouldn't let me go to the restroom. Why? We just couldn't go. She would, she didn't allow us." That's not okay. That's when I sent you that message about the restroom policy. Communication goes a long way, and half of the issues that the parents might be here for today, they probably would be a little bit more understanding if the communication was relayed a lot better in a timely manner with respect, courtesy, and these are our taxpayers. We are taxpayers, we are parents, and we should be listening to what they say.
Other board comments or questions before?
Sorry about that. I can't speak on the bathroom, Carla, because I don't know what the procedure is right now. But I do know, because I worked at Lakeview and many schools, there has, or there needs to be some type of perimeter on restroom breaks because kids will go to the restroom and it's a constant going. So, I'm sure that maybe, and like I said, I can't speak from this, that they did gave, give them two a day. But I also would have to believe with all my heart, if a student went to a teacher and said, "I've used my passes, but I really need to go to the restroom," that they would let them go. If, if the, well-
Again, we're gonna try and have a meeting up here with the board?
But there are ways around that. You can go to the front office and say, "The restroom is locked. May I please go?" So, some things that, that I'm hearing, and just like many things, there's more to the story. So, and that is our job, to find more to the story. But I'm going to have, I, I have to have belief in the administrators, the teachers, the people that are there. They're not, they're there because they love kids, and they're gonna do what's best for kids. And I'm not saying it doesn't happen. Sometimes a teacher, you know, doesn't hear, but we, I would hope that we would give grace, and we would find the reason behind a story. So, if a child goes home and says, "My teacher wouldn't let me go to the restroom today," I, as a parent, in a very gracious way, if you want, to go find out the why. Because, I'll just give you an example. A student comes to class 15 minutes late. Well, 15 minutes late's a long time. Where had they been? As a teacher, you're assuming the bathroom somewhere. They sit down and they say, "I need to go to the bathroom." You know, as an educator, you're like, and it's a disruption. So, there's a lot to all of these stories. So, I'm listening, but I'm also saying, let's, let's give some grace, let's communicate. Teachers are very open, and Mr. Ramirez is very open to hear your side. But like I said, and, and sometimes what you're hearing, I was a parent, may not be the whole story. So, and it is our job to find the whole story. But like I said, in a very, I just keep using the word grace because sometimes I don't think we give each other that. And I'm not saying what's right or what's wrong. I may be wrong, but give me the opportunity to, and a teacher, the people that are working there, the cafeteria people, give them the opportunity to tell their story too, and then we all work together.
Our team and I went on Wednesday of last week when nobody was out. I think the last person in line got their food with about 20 minutes left, somewhere in there. So, and for the, and I say for the open campus, for the juniors and seniors, it's, it's terrible. I agree. I agree. It's a bad deal. But during the last few years, the graduation rate, as well as the attendance rate, has fallen off at Lakeview. So, a big problem is tardiness after lunch, and the other problem, and I'm not saying the good kids are not coming back to school. I'm just saying that there's a huge problem with tardiness after lunch during the past few years. In addition to that, kids just not coming back from lunch, period. So, that's, that's a concern for us because it drives the academics at the school down if, if kids aren't in class and doing their work. And again, it's, it's a, it's a terrible situation for the juniors and seniors because it's pushed upon them at the last moment, and that's all, and that's all the good kids. So, that's, that's bad, but the, the issue is that Lakeview needs academic improvement, period. And so, one way we can do that is getting kids in class and they're, and being in their seats, especially in a class after lunch. So, again, as we move forward, it's, it's a tough decision right now. We're making every effort. I'm not for sure about portion size either. I wish that everybody, every kid could get whatever he wanted when they came through the line. I didn't pay particular attention to the portion size, but it looks like most of the place for full when I came there on Wednesday, and that was basically during the A lunch. The B lunch was a lot quicker. The B lunch finished up with about 25 minutes left for kids to eat. So, I know this is a, this was a hardship on some, on some of these kids, but the, the bottom line is that we have got to improve the academic improvement and the attendance rate at Lakeview for kids to be successful when they get out of high school.
So, is there a big discrepancy with attendance rates from Lakeview to Central, as well as the academic deficiencies? Is there a big difference?
So, I, I'm gonna say, I think we should stop making this about Lakeview and Central.
Those are the only two high schools, Dr. Kingman?
We should make this, we should make this, we should make this about the district as a whole, and the reality is our secondary campuses. If y'all, can we please let us have a meeting? Can we please have a meeting? If you can't be part of the meeting, I would ask that you please leave so that we can have our meeting. Then we can ask you to leave if you please don't want to be here to listen to the meeting. We're all elected officials, and we're, we're all elected officials.
Dr. Kingman, the one thing I keep hearing, and like, I've been doing this, I've been here for 20 years, okay? And this whole Lakeview versus Central thing, okay, this is, has always just, yeah, and you're gonna hear it too, okay? The last 20 years I've been doing this, who's got the newest high school? Lakeview. Lakeview's got the newest high school. Lakeview's got the newest, who's got the newest middle school? Lincoln. Okay? Glenn wasn't even touched in the last month. What I'm saying is that this district has not ignored your needs. That's what I'm saying, okay? So, don't come in here and telling me that, well, y'all have ignored everything we wanted. We're, you're not being treated like a redheaded stepchild. You're not. You're not. Because you know what? We're trying to get this stuff done for your kids, and that's, that's, that's why I haven't said nothing. I go, you know what? I want these kids. Y'all don't understand because you're parents. Everyone wants the best for their kids, but you know what? When your kid comes home saying, "I want, I want to go to lunch," you know, I understand that. I mean, I, like Dr., like Dr. Kyle said, you know, at 16-years-old, I probably would have done the same thing. But you know what my dad would have said? "No, you're going to lunch at school whether you like it or not." Period. That's it. Because you know what? I'm gonna tell you what, what, what I don't understand is that, the way I see it, the way I see it, I mean, how many y'all provide money for your kids?
Gerard, make sure you're talking to us as well.
Okay, okay, but here's the thing, but no, but here, here's my question. Here's my question. How many y'all are-
Gerard, Gerard.
Let me ask them this.
Address us. Address us with the question.
Well, okay. How many are a free and reduced lunch? Okay. Now, why would, why wouldn't you want to save money and eat a free lunch? Why wouldn't you want to save money? And that's what I don't understand. So, this has always been, this has been, this whole thing has been perplexing to me. I'm sitting there going, why not save, why not save money? Why are you on free lunch? And does this affect our free lunch? So, so, like I just wanted to say, like I just wanted to say, you know, Lakeview and Central, or Central and Lakeview, this whole thing, this disparity thing, let it go. 'Cause I've been hearing, I've been, I've been hearing it for 20 years. I've been hearing it for 20 years, and you're right. You're right. Now, 30 years ago, yeah, probably. 30 years ago, probably.
We have to choose our words appropriately, guys. We can't communicate like this with the public.
Well, you know what? That's how, that's how I'm communicating. So, and just to let you know, I'm, I'm gonna tell you something. I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you something, Carla. The last 20 years that I've been here, I have never voted no on anything for Lakeview, ever. I have suggested changes for Lakeview that were done. Things that they were ignored before I got on the board, we got done, okay? So, I don't want to hear this, well, you know, we do a lot for Lakeview. We do. We have done a lot for Lakeview the last 20 years that I've been here. And that's why it's offensive to me to hear someone sit there and go, "For the last 20 years, I've been saying yes, voting yes, voting yes, voting yes," and then they come in and say, "Y'all don't do anything for us." We do a lot for you, but you don't pay attention. That's what it is.
The, the reality is-
That's all I had to say on that.
The reality is both of our secondary, as a board, as I'm talking to our board, both, both of our secondary campuses academically are F.
Yes.
They are both academically as F. And the reality is, the way the state monitors our academics as a district, is that we are in five-year windows to looking at how to improve. And the reality is, as a district, there, there's no secret. Going from '71 to '73 as a district, that's not good enough for San Angelo. That's not the expectation of San Angelo. That's not the expectation of this board. It's not the expectation of this administrative team. It's why we went and hired a superintendent from a district that is an A district with similar demographics to our district, who has been here before in a position to run an A district. And so, when we look at the academics of our schools, they're not good enough, anywhere. They're not. And so, in order to make the academics where they need to be, not only for, for our students, for the future of San Angelo, for the state of Texas, we're gonna have to make some really hard changes that are going to affect, that are going to upset people all over this town. And the reality is, that is what is necessary because the complacency in doing the same thing is not getting the job done. And so, what I pray is that we have the wisdom to make the hard decisions. We look at when the hard decisions happen, we, we continue to evaluate. That doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna get every decision right every time. We probably won't, okay? But what it means is that as a district, we have to get better, and we're gonna, it's gonna be heavy lifting on our teachers, and we have to support our teachers. It's gonna be heavy lifting on our cafeteria workers, it's gonna be heavy lifting on our parents, it's gonna be heavy lifting on our administrative team. It, it's going to take changes, and people are gonna be upset at times about some of the changes. You're gonna like some, you're gonna dislike some of the others. My wife's gonna like them and dislike some of them, and I'm gonna have to go home and she's gonna tell me that she dislikes them. And the reality isn't that, and, but the reality is, we have to get better. We don't have a choice. And what we need to do as a board is work together to try and come up with plans that are palatable, palatable, yeah, to the community. Because while as a board, you may not agree with everything the, the eight of us sitting right here do. If it's the state of Texas mandating it, you're really not gonna like it, okay? Because you're gonna lose, you're gonna lose the fact that you have the ability to work with the people who are on the board. You have, you're gonna lose that ability. And so, what I will tell you is, we're making drastic changes, and we need to make those drastic changes. And so, to, why are we doing, to me, why are we doing it at Lakeview right now as opposed, when we can't do it at Central yet? Because we don't have the time to not. We need to be, I wish we could do it at Central right now. So, and I just wanted to say, I want to thank the fact that everyone is working hard to try and come up with a plan, and I do think we have to explain it. We have to be honest with our public. We have to say, hey, we're not good enough, okay? We're not good enough academically. We have to make changes to be better academically. And so, we can't just, and we need to be better at providing CTE. We need to be better at a lot of things, and we're working that way. But that is going to take time, and it's also going to take things that are not as palatable. So, we're gonna do our best to do that and get us where we need to go. And I will tell you that if, if San Angelo ISD does not get where it needs to go, it won't be for the lack of effort from these eight people and from our administrative team and from our teachers, because they're good people, okay? They're good people trying to do the right thing for the people of San Angelo. And so, with that, we'll, any other board comments or questions?
It's not a thing of good people or bad people. We're, I think every, I think the world of all of y'all. We're a team here, but the thing is, we have to meet in the middle somewhere with our public. Our public is crying out for help, and we can't shut them off. We have to meet in the middle somewhere, Dr. Moran. We do, that's just the honest truth. Not only CTE courses either, we need to be looking at advanced placement courses also. There's a big discrepancy from Central and Lakeview too. Why are we not trying to build our Lakeview students into, into doctors and things like that instead of just no disrespect against welders? You can make a lot of money. That's great, welding, roofing, things like that, but let's, let's, instead of just worrying about closing campus, fixing our academic problem, we have a lot more to worry about. And until we can get both campuses on the same page as far as closing lunch, I think it was a wrong move, especially a couple of weeks before school started. And just admitting that and humbling down and saying, listen, you know, maybe we didn't advise everybody within time, that's my fault, that's my mistake. That goes a long way too, owning up to things like that. I've learned that in my life. You have to humble yourself every single day, and that goes a long way. We can't just keep shutting the public off. We have to say, hey, we're gonna meet y'all in the middle somewhere along the way. That's what I think, but I'm only one of eight, guys.
Other board, other board comments or questions?
I just want to, you talked about academics, and since we, I had this moment, I just-
That's the whole reason why we're closing campuses, academics.
Right. But I just want to say, Lakeview started the school year with not enough math teachers. And two of the math teachers that I know had retired, and during some time with them, I, we talked about them going back and teaching part-time, and that's what we're doing right now with teachers. We're finding retired teachers that are crafted in their skill and asking them to come back part-time, not because they need to, they're retired, but because they love kids and they want to teach. So, two of these teachers have gone back to Lakeview and they're teaching part-time. Another one had left Central to stay home and is at Lakeview teaching, and these teachers are phenomenal. And when I spoke to them, it wasn't, you know, one was at Central, one had been at Glenn and had gone and moved back, and my conversation was, "Lakeview's a great place, and Lake-" And my conversation was, Lakeview's a great place and Lakeview has great kids. I loved my three years at Lakeview. And, um, and, and they came back. I was talking to Zach before, um, the meeting about how I'm, how excited I am that those teachers are at Lakeview. Lakeview is a good place. When I go out and try to get teachers, I'm looking for teachers to come and teach kids. I'm not looking for them to teach at this school and this school's better because a child is a child. So I do think at Lakeview, we're, we're pulling everything we have to make it a great place academically.
Well, I, I think that goes back to the main point. That the, I don't, I can't speak for the administration team, but I don't think the decision to close the campus was made in efforts to be fair. We were, they were closing the campus to improve the academics on, at Lakeview. We're trying to do the best we can at Lakeview. I mean, I think, so one of the smartest people I know graduated from Lakeview. I think there could be a lot of extremely awesome things done at Lakeview. Very intelligent people could be, I mean, the academics could be much better at Lakeview. I think we all know that. So why aren't we, why wouldn't we do everything possible we can today to do it? And I, I wanted to go personally to lunch to make sure that it was, that it was functioning as intended. You get a lot of misinformation from this person, this person. I wanted to make sure the lunch was, kids were being fed, kids were being fed timely and they had places to sit. Just, you know, the basic stuff. And I felt like functionally it was working well. Now, are there things that could be tweaked and improved? Absolutely. I don't think we're content to stop where we're at currently. I think, I talked with the nutrition team and Zach and there's a lot of things that they're still planning to do to improve the functional capacity. But if we're trying to improve the academics at Lakeview, why wouldn't we do it now? And if the answer is because another school isn't doing it, to me, that is not a very good answer. That's, that's just not. You want to do what's best for Lakeview. And I think that's the intention or my understanding.
Any other board comments or questions?
If I could just add to the academic piece. I've spoken to a couple of teachers at Lakeview, just asking, how are things going with, you know, the closed lunch? And, um, several teachers have talked about how, um, between the no cell phones, um, with, because of no cell phones, kids are talking at lunch, which I got to see when I was there. They're talking at lunch, they're bonding at lunch. And then, like we were saying earlier, they're coming back to class on time after lunch. One of the teachers I talked to said that she gets ten to fifteen minutes back a day because she was losing so much time from kids coming back late from lunch every day. And she said, I feel like I have an entire extra day in my fifth period class, um, which is the class after lunch. Um, and then, um, so because of that bonding after lunch, they're noticing it in the classrooms, or they're bonding during lunch. So they're noticing it in the classrooms, that they're coming back and they're all joking about things that they, you know, talked about at lunch and they're, instead of, you know, all being on their phones the whole time. So I'm gonna say again that as a parent of a child at Central, I wish that my child had the opportunity to have that academic success, that greater oper- academic success that they, success that they're seeing at Central right now. And I'm looking forward to seeing the growth there.
Any other board comments?
So, new board member here. The parents that spoke today, will you all be responding to them? Is there email or who will, how can they get answers to, to their questions from today? Especially since it was.
So, yeah, so any specific comment? Obviously, you know, they, just so parents are aware, you know, you start with your campus leadership. Set a meeting up with the campus leadership. I think Mr. Ramirez has met with a lot of parents, at least when he and I have talked, that that was the impression I received. Then he, that can move, it can move all the way through a formal grievance process. I mean, to where if you have a problem with the district policy, like that's where it can go. But you start with a meeting with their, and then you can set up a meeting above Mr. Ramirez. If you don't like what Mr. Ramirez is saying, it would probably go to, is it Mr. Kalmbach? And so, but Mr. Ramirez can then help guide you to the next place and then eventually can get to a, if desire, a formal grievance where it would go from the whole board. All right. Dr. Moran, you got anything else on that?
Nothing else.
Perfect. All right, we're gonna move forward with a summary of findings of T E A intruder detection and audit conducted by E S C staff. And Mrs. Passero's gonna help us with that.
Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, and members of the board, thank you for your time. Um, we have had two intruder detection audits in the month of August and the first week of September. Any findings and corrective actions needed, if any, have been addressed by our campus administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Passero, and looking forward to having you here more often.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here.
All right, next we have a construction update and Mr. Danheim. And I see R.J. Lopez right there, so maybe Mr. Lopez is gonna help us with that.
Yes, it'll be me tonight, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the school board. It's great to be back out here. Um, we've got a lot going on with the school bond. And so, we're gonna run through some of what we've been up to over the last month. I can't believe it's been a month because we've been so busy. Um, like to keep showing this, uh, bond projects timeline just because we've got a lot of projects, uh, across the, the district and want to make sure that we're, we're keeping the, uh, the deadlines and the goals up, uh, in front of everybody's, uh, top of mind and making sure that we're, we're headed in the right spot. And I can tell you right now, we're, we're right on schedule. We've got, uh, projects that are supposed to be under construction, like Crockett is, is under construction and, um, all the projects that are under design are currently on track. And so, we'll walk through what we've been up to and then what to look forward to over the coming months. This is, uh, the, the detailed breakdown. I don't wanna, I won't spend too much time on it, but just to give you an idea of, of some of the projects. You can see that the orange there shows, uh, some of the design phase. So you can see on, on Crockett, we were designing in April and, in May and then went into bidding in, uh, June and July. Um, and now we're under construction, um, in September with that blue bar there. And each project, obviously, the larger the project, the, the longer the design phase takes. And we'll be discussing what the design phase looks like, uh, over the next few months because we'll be going through that process. I know y'all have done that on, on Fannin and McGill and we're going through that again on, on some of the Phase Two projects. So quickly, on, uh, Crockett Elementary, it is now under construction. We've received a, a permit for the civil and earthwork. So they've got construction fencing, um, that's been put up. They've got a construction trailer that should be, uh, arriving towards the end of this week or next. Um, and so that, that project is on track to open August 2026 with, uh, the contractor is Lee Lewis Construction. Next project that we're working on is McGill Elementary. And you can see that one is, um, under the construction documents phase. So we've kind of got through some of the 3D massing and, um, schematic design of where the building would be located. We're working through some of utilities and site plan, um, layout options and starting to put together the details for the contractor. So that one is getting closer and closer to being, uh, put out for bidding. Some of the upcoming, um, meetings will be just finalizing some of the design development. So that's, you know, verifying some of the final finishes such as carpet and tile. And a lot of what we'll be using is what was already used in Phase One. So that should go pretty quickly. And, and it's what's kind of becoming some of the, uh, district standards that we talked about, materials that are easily replaceable, that'll last, last, uh, a good amount of time. On the new Glenn Middle School, we actually, um, have our site surveys underway um, so that we can tackle some of that, uh, that grading out there. That'll be pretty fun to, to do since the existing school was built on a hill and we're looking at putting now the, uh, the, the new field on a hill. Um, but, uh, we've also been advertising and this all, most of these items will be for Glenn, Central, and Lakeview since they're all larger projects that, that y'all, uh, agreed that need a construction manager at risk on, to where we're bringing the contractor on, on board earlier. Um, we're, we've actually advertised for a construction manager, um, over the past two weekends. Uh, it'll be advertising again this Sunday. Uh, we had our pre-bid today, which was virtual, and we had, uh, thirty people join the pre-bid, which was, which was a really good turnout. There's really not a whole lot of construction managers that specialize in school construction, that have the experience, uh, to perform this work at the quality that we're asking for. So, I mean, to get thirty to, to show up, and obviously, that's not thirty individual construction managers. It was probably, uh, ten individual construction managers that, that showed up that are interested in, in their team. But it's, it was a really good turnout. And so, what we did is kind of run through the scope of the project and let them ask questions. And they'll be, uh, submitting for that next week. And so, we'll be able to, um, evaluate those and hopefully by the, the next board meeting, uh, you'll have some recommendations on, on options for construction managers for Glenn, Central, and Lakeview. One thing that we also.
Real quick, is there any chance we would use the same construction manager at risk for all three projects in order to get a better, call it rate?
Great question. So, uh, the way the request for proposals reads is that each construction manager can propose for Glenn, Central, and Lakeview. And then they can also propose any cost savings or additional, uh, comments that they might have if they were to get one, two, or all three projects. So we allowed them to bid on all three projects separately as part of their proposal and then provide any additional information as to schedule impact or cost impact if they were to get one, two, or three. Because there are some, uh, construction managers that probably couldn't handle more than maybe just Lakeview even, just based on their size and experience. And then there are some that could handle all three, but they might provide a list of current projects that shows that we might not want them working on all three projects because of their current workload. So all of those factors will come into play when y'all, uh, when the recommendation comes to the board and is part of the selection criteria. All right. One other thing that we were doing with the same committee, um, which was Glenn, Lakeview, and Central, we did do, uh, tours in Lubbock, Seminole, and Brownfield of facilities that were built in the past five to fifteen years um, that had similar, uh, space types to what y'all are looking at building. So we, we took the, uh, internal design team, the administrators and the, the school staff and our design team from the Park Hill side and kind of had them discussing, um, materials and space volumes and just different opportunities for, say, light that maybe you didn't have at Glenn because they didn't have any windows because of, you know, the, the parameters that they had. So the opportunities just for every classroom to potentially have a window or, or an adequate-sized hallway or, um, you know, floor materials that are, are more optimal than what was done seventy years ago. So there's, there was a lot of, uh, really great conversations that were had about what, what could be best for the, the school district um, over the course of the, not just the next year or two years, but the next, uh, thirty to seventy years. So it's very exciting to see. And some of those facilities were Lubbock Cooper Middle School, uh, Lubbock Cooper Pirate High School, Lubbock Cooper Liberty High School, Seminole High School, and, and Brownfield High School. And we actually took all the teams from all the projects so that when we were talking about a, a floor material or maybe an air conditioning system, we could kind of be having some of these same conversations because a lot of those things apply to all the facilities and a lot of the, you know, Tony's guys are gonna be working on all those facilities. So we wanted to make sure all of these conversations were being had together so that everybody that had, um, you know, some type of, of interest in how the facility is either being used as a, a teaching tool or maintaining the facility could be involved in those discussions. So, um, upcoming, we talked about, um, receiving the, the construction manager proposals and then coming back with the, uh, the recommendations. And then, we're also gonna start, um, starting tomorrow, actually. We've got, uh, multiple meetings for, uh, Lakeview to start, uh, playing with the, the pieces of where the auto shop and the welding shop and the health science lab, kind of where those might be able to, uh, attach to the existing building and, and how Mariachi would relate to the existing, uh, band hall. So we call it a charrette when we have all the people that were in that, uh, that tour come together and start kind of brainstorming on, on how these facilities can best function, uh, for the, the, the students and teachers in that space. And so, we're gonna be having some of those, those meetings, uh, many, many more meetings. But that's just kind of, tomorrow's the kickoff for Lakeview. And then, uh, Wednesday we'll have Central. And then next Monday, we've got Glenn. And so, we'll start getting to actually see what those, those floor plans and the opportunities for those spaces can be. On the bottom there, you can see some of the example spaces. That's on the bottom left, that's Lubbock Cooper Middle School. So we got to see their, their cafeteria in action. And they actually had quite a few more students, uh, in their student population than what they had been planning for. So it was good to see because they could say, we need the cafeteria to be bigger than this because they were kind of exploding at the time. And so that was one thing we got to discuss is, you know, it's one thing to say, we need a five thousand square foot cafeteria, but to see a five thousand square foot cafeteria with four hundred kids in it and say, this is too small, we need bigger, you know? That's, that's what these tours were able to do, especially when we could see students using them and students going through the, uh, the cafeteria lines. They had, you know, four cafeteria lines and that's just not something that the, y'all have been able to really see function at a high level before. So being able to see that and say, well, maybe we need five because I think we might have more students, uh, at, at Glenn during a lunch period. So we were able to have some really good, good conversations. Same thing with some of the gym spaces and some of the, the outdoor, um, play slash, um, eating space. All right, the next project was, uh, Lakeview. And like I said, this is very similar. I probably won't go through, um, all the same elements, but site survey's happening. We've got the C M R request for proposals out. We got to look at some, uh, really exciting spaces. Um, and I've got pictures on the next, so I'm just gonna jump to some of those pictures. Um, we got to see some facilities that were really nice, some facilities that were done really efficiently. We think, we had a lot of comments about the ones that were done efficiently that people liked and said, okay, we like this sealed concrete in certain places because it makes a lot of sense. It's a really cost-effective thing that lasts a while. Um, and then there was also some facilities that we saw that had, you know, higher-end materials that last a lot longer, that makes sense in certain applications. So I think there was some good conversations where we'll probably end up in the middle, I think, on, on a lot of the facilities that we saw. Um, and so, it was a really good experience to see. Uh, the top left there is, is an automotive shop that we saw and it was really neat to see. It was like a, it's like a Pet Boys at Brownfield and they got to talk to the automotive instructor and got to, you know, see what works well. And it was actually a little bit smaller than what we were planning for, but the, the space efficiency. space efficiency worked out so well that I think it might actually buy us a little bit more room for flexibility in our space if we use a similar layout, but we have even more room in our program. Um, so that was, that was nice to see. Um, on the top right there, that was kind of small, but that was, uh, one of their, their health science labs, so the opportunity for having health science at, uh, Lakeview as well, um, is really exciting, uh, opportunity, you know, over there. And then, just some of the example welding shops that we saw. Um, Central High School, we were looking at some of the, uh, the same things, uh, as, I mean, uh, some of the same items. Obviously, we had, uh, different space types that we were looking at, and I'll, I'll just jump to those. And, um, one thing that we, was nice to be able to reference is that we did all go and also tour some of the existing facilities. We toured all the existing facilities before we toured, uh, the new ones. So, we went to Lakeview, we went to Central, um, and so, while we were touring, top left is Seminole High School, um, we were also referencing, like, Lakeview's auditorium, and some of the things that Lakeview's auditorium has versus what, uh, Central's auditorium has, and, you know, the kind of in-betweens. I don't think we're going to quite get to a Seminole, uh, auditorium. We're not looking at doing a balcony necessarily right now for, for Central, but just having the, the adequate, uh, individual seating and proper acoustics and proper, uh, backstage like Lakeview already has, and dressing rooms like Lakeview already has, um, would be a huge step up, uh, for Central. Um, and then on the top right there, you can see, uh, an example culinary lab that we looked at, um, and then just some of the example common spaces that we would be able to, to provide. And nowadays, a lot of times, they're calling the, the cafeteria area commons as well. So, Lakeview kind of has their, their cafeteria, has a pretty nice, large common space with the, the glass, uh, so being able to provide something like that at Central, um, would, would be a, a nice opportunity. Um, let's see, I think that's it from the tours, and we'll, we'll be bringing back, every time we meet with the, the committees and the, the teachers, we'll be bringing back kind of the, the progress on some of their options and what they've been looking at as far as, um, how these new pieces come together in the building and the, the opportunities that, that they have for connecting to the existing buildings. Um, there's, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of options being made right now, and I know throughout the bond process, uh, there was always maintenance and operations was really a, a big piece, and then, um, capital renewal and the longevity of the buildings was always a big piece. And so, one thing that we're always keeping at the top of our mind is that some of these initial decisions that we're making, you know, even though we're just seeing maybe the, the fifteen to twenty percent of it, you know, when we look at even a carpet tile, seal, sealed concrete versus carpet, that we're always looking at, well, when does that need to be replaced? How much does it cost now versus how much does it cost over the course of seventy-five years? Because sometimes, it's real easy to go with the, a really cheap floor material, um, but if you're having to replace it every three to five years, it's not what's best for the interest of the school district. So, every one of these decisions we're trying to make, we're trying to consider what's kind of that underlying piece that, that we're not necessarily seeing that we need to be thinking about. So, we're, we're trying to keep that at the top of, of everybody's mind, along with the mission of the school district. So, I mean, future-ready learners, uh, so it's an exciting time, and we're moving forward on the bond projects. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Lopez? All right, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we're going to start now by going through our proposed agenda for, um, next week, and just a note, just, I'll remind us at the end, our meeting next week is on Thursday. Um, so, invocation, pledge, recognitions, um, then we'll have a construction update by Mr. Danheim, update on academic programs, Dr. Gomez, um, well, nothing we need to talk about that tonight, we'll do all that next week. Um, update on personnel from Ms. Griffin next week. Okay. And update on campus enrollment, anything we need to do on that tonight?
No, sir, we're just going to give you an, uh, update as far as campus by grade level, and then, uh, Mr. Kalmbach will offer his expertise and dig a little deeper into the enrollment, historically and projected.
And I want to go back a little bit, the update on personnel, that's going to address our rehires, hires, um, some questions that were asked at our last-
Yeah, all the certifications by grade level, uh, uh, which classes are, are not being taught by certified, certified teacher, which have retired rehires, and the team's working on that now to prepare for next week.
Okay. Um, and then, we'll have some consent items, um, and we're going to, there's some things that I can have tagged for consent, but if we're not re, comfortable with them consent, we can move them to the regular for, um, but donations and our minutes from our August meetings, um, we're going to discuss bid twenty dash zero one four, Mr. Henry, so we can try and keep that on consent for next week. You're actually going to be up here for a minute.
Yes, sir. Uh, this, this first one, bid twenty dash zero one four, this is the curriculum instruction, this is just an adder to our existing bid, uh, it's a curriculum provider, uh, asked by the C N I department to be added.
So, this is just an add to a bid that we've already approved for, previously for curriculum instruction. Any questions about that, adding that vendor?
Same.
Is everyone okay with it being consent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we'll keep that on consent. Uh, next, we have bid twenty-five dash zero one zero, and it's a carpet installation bid.
Annually, the purchasing department receives bid pricing for the purchase of carpet with installation. This year, we gave specification for four hundred square yards of twenty-four by twenty-four carpet squares. The bid establishes a vendor for maintenance, for the maintenance department to use when carpet is replaced. The contract period is for, for this bid begins on October first and ends on September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, with two one-year options for renewal. This year, we received one bid, this bid was from the incumbent, Smith Flooring, who has won this bid four times over the last seven years. Uh, the administration recommends the purchase of carpet from Smith Flooring for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The bid tabulation is attached.
And Mr. Henry, this is for, this isn't for like a big revitalization project, this is for patching carpets that are-
This is for as needed, if, if we needed a room, this room recarpeted, we could call Smith Flooring. We have a predetermined price for both the material and the labor.
Okay.
Mr. Henry, similar pricing as, was last year?
It was, it went up just a little bit, but yeah, it was very similar.
Thanks.
Any questions regarding the carpet-
Does Smith have the bid last year also?
They did, and they've done an excellent job for us.
Thank you.
Everyone okay with consent on that? All right. Bid twenty-five dash zero one one, paper towels and toilet tissue.
Each year, we submit a bid for paper towels and toilet tissue for the use in all of our facilities. In this bid, we will also secure unlimited dispensers with our pricing. This year, we also asked for direct, a direct delivery option to increase efficiency in deliveries. We had seven vendors respond to this bid. Supplies will be purchased on an as-needed basis and directly delivered to the campus this year. Funds for these purchases are available through the maintenance budget and various campus budgets. After a review of the proposals with the director of maintenance and evaluation of the bids was prepared based on the scoring criteria. This contract too, contract period is from October first to September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, with an option for two additional one-year renewals. The administration recommends approval of Mayfield Paper Company as our toilet paper and toilet, and toilet tissue, I'm sorry, paper towel and toilet tissue vendor.
Everyone okay with consent on that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Bid twenty-five dash zero one three is our safety and security audit. This is something that's required by the state. Um, can you give us-
Current three-year school safety and security audit cycle for school districts begins on November first, twenty-twenty-three, and ends on August thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six. School district safety and security audits required, are required by Texas Education Code thirty-seven point one oh eight, and must be completed during that cycle. Districts are required to report specified, specified audit results to the Texas School Safety Center by September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-six. Bid specifications were developed for companies to assist in the completion of the Texas School Safety Center Audit Tool. Six vendors responded to this bid. All companies submitted resumes to, of their audit teams. The bids were evaluated, and the incumbent, Crux Technology and Solutions, Security Solutions, presented a team that demonstrated the knowledge for conducting a comprehensive review of school dis, school and district facilities and operations. The administration recommends approval of Crux Technology and Security Solutions of Fort Worth to conduct the Texas School Safety Center, School Safety and Security Audit. Total cost of this project will be forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Do we have any questions?
Mr. Henry, I noticed that Crux graded out slightly higher than Chatham, which is a little less, was a little less expensive. Is it familiarity, familiarity with our system that would provide the, the-
Yeah, familiarity, and, and they're a great, great group to work with as well. They're, uh, they did our last audit, and they had actually done the audit before that. We had hired them as just an independent auditor for an audit, and they also assisted us in several of our security projects as well.
Okay, thank you.
Consent? Okay, we'll keep that on, we'll keep that on consent. Next is bid twenty-five dash zero one six, um, and that's Sam Houston demolition.
With the movement of freshmen away from the Oaks Campus, it opened up space to allow ancillary programs to be moved into the existing building. This allowed the special programs department to move out of Sam Houston and into this campus. This move left the old Sam Houston campus vacant with no lo, no longer needed. With the assistance of King's Consultants, specifications and drawings were produced to abate and demo the entire Sam Houston campus. Bids were opened, and five contractors submitted quality bids for this work. Bids were, were scored and reviewed, and Reese Albert Trucking of San Angelo and A M L Environmental received the highest scores. The administration recommends approval of Reese Albert Trucking to demo the building and A M L Environmental to abate at Sam Houston Elementary. Total cost for all demo and abatement is three hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, which includes a forty thousand dollar contingency. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Henry or-
Mr. Henry, have we used A M L before?
We have not used A, or, I'm sorry, I take that back. We have used A M L before, they were a subcontractor under Mid-Tex at Al Toloma. They did all the abatement there, did a good job.
Satisfactory?
Yes.
Other questions for Mr. Henry?
Where, where's Sam Houston?
It's on the corner, uh, right there, that, that, you know, that, that, I think it's L and, and, it's a little-
Is this part of the bond package, or what, what is this?
No, this is part of vacating old buildings that our maintenance staff can no longer, uh, we're, as a district, wouldn't have a use for the building. It's beyond its useful life. Taking it offline saves hours and hours of manpower and costly, uh, maintenance to an old building. It's, if you were to go, uh, up Bryant, turn right, I think at, is it McDonald's? Maybe one block over, and it'll be on the left.
Oh, okay, right by the light.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
So, it's been office space for the last several years. It hasn't been used as a campus for a long time. Um, and so, when we've looked at things, you know, predating, I think, anyone who's on this board, maybe not, but the Travis Elementary and, you know, and some things that were, things sit vacant in the neighborhood, yeah, we want to make sure that we're, um, being good stewards to that neighborhood, not letting something just run down right there, so-
So, are we not able to, to sell these, these buildings? Why are we looking to, to demo?
Well, we did that with Travis. We sold it, and the person that sold it just didn't do anything with it. So, it's just been sitting there vacant.
Yeah, but that's not our problem after we sell it.
I know it's not our problem, but they call us all the time going, "How come y'all didn't tear down Travis?"
It's still not our problem.
It's like, that's what I tell them, it's not ours anymore.
I'm just seeing this amount here, three hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and sixty to demo it.
Yeah, yeah. And then, and you know what, I'm going to tell you something, the reason, um, a lot of it is, uh, is asbestos abatement. Like Travis, the reason we sold it was it was going to cost about four hundred thousand dollars back then to tear down Travis, but the majority of it was abatement for asbestos. And you're like, so the guy bought it, and, you know, he, uh, he didn't want to tear it down neither, so you just kind of go, "Well..." So, if we sell it, I don't want it sitting there for the next twenty years because someone doesn't want to do anything with it, so it's just better.
But you don't know if they're going to-
I mean, also, we could still sell the property if we tore it now. You could still sell the property.
Or, and, or we-
And that money can go towards the district, I mean, yeah.
We could also use the property for-
Or use the property for something else.
In the future for something.
Is that something we're looking to do?
But, I mean, we don't, at the moment, we're know we're not going to use that building, and main, the idea is, you know, is the board, as we've looked at things in the past, is maintaining buildings we're not using and spending that money. Like, one, some of our insurance won't let us insure it typically, um, to, it ends up being a blight on the neighborhood, so being able, we don't necessarily want to be in the business of holding properties, we also want to make sure that we don't need it for something in the future, but we do want to make sure that a property that is, a building, not property, a building that has passed its useful use, we, um, don't let it sit there empty and not be good for that neighborhood, and then, we can use that property for something else in the future if we want to.
How long has it been empty?
We moved out of it, uh, this year.
Three months, four months.
Three months, and you're looking to demo when?
As soon as we can.
So, it hasn't been sitting there. To me, it's a large amount of money.
It hasn't been used at school for over a decade, though.
But it's still been utilized, right?
Maybe, maybe a good thing would be for, we can't do it as a board, but maybe, um, we'll leave it on the agenda, there's a way maybe that you could go view, like, mo, I think most people on the board have been through that building, we'll set up a time for you to go through that building with Dr. Moran, um, so that you can see what we're dealing with, um, and that way, um, it may alleviate some fears about what we're doing.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So, why don't we, why don't we set something up like that? Any other board member, obviously, we can't go as a quorum, but if there's a facility that we, um, are looking at, because I, to your point, some of this has been talked about for year, you know, months and years and not, is new to use since May, and so, let's, I want to make sure we get, um, we have, you have every opportunity to see why some of us have felt that that's the way to go, we haven't voted on it yet, obviously, but, um, what we can do is, um, try and set up a time for you and Dr. Moran volunteering that, to go do, um, a walkthrough of that, so you see what we're looking at. Sound good?
Interesting on action, too.
And we can, let's make it a regular item for, uh, next week, that way, um, we'll keep everything else consent. Any other questions or comments regarding the Sam Houston demolition? Okay. Next, we're going to have things that we, for sure, when we're planning on action items, uh, bid twenty-five dash zero one nine, a demography study.
Demographic study?
San Angelo I S D is soliciting proposals for a qualified firms specializing in K-12 demographic analyst, analyst, analysis, enrollment forecasting, and planning support services. The selected firm will serve as the district's demographer, providing comprehensive reports, presentations, and ongoing consultation to the district's administration and board of trustees. The primary objective is to develop reliable data to support long-range facility planning, potential attendance- potential attendance boundaries modification and strategic decision-making. We received two proposals from firms capable of performing this type of work. The scoring criteria was applied and Zonda Demographics proposed the lowest cost and received the highest score. The administration recommends awarding Zonda Demographics of, of South Lake with a contract for the total amount of $32,000. Do we have any questions on that?
I have a question. So, there wasn't, there was something similar to this done before the bond, is that right? Is this like a more advanced version of that?
Right, so SDS was our demographer in, in the past and they brought a, kind of an update last November, or last fall to the Facility Advisory Committee. What we're hoping for is a deep dive and a more thorough treatment. SDS was given the opportunity to be a part of this. We did not receive the bid per the bid requirements on time. Zonda was chosen. The other vendor that submitted was quite a bit higher and typically is. And so, we felt really good about this. And Zonda used to be Templeton Demographics. And some, I don't know if this district has ever used Templeton, but I've had experience with Templeton as well. They're very, very good. So, we'll have a good experience with them, I feel confident.
And so, to your point, Dr. Mills, I think the idea is that, is that they're going to give us fluid data over the next, I think it's three with two one-year terms, so like a five-year contract where we can make sure that as we are looking at our district as a whole and trying to figure out what the next, even more so, we have buildings, what the next 20 years looks like for the growth of San Angelo, making sure that we are confident in what we're building, that things last for the next 75 years. And if we're looking at attendance zones or right sizing schools, that we make sure that the things we come up with aren't something that has to be changed three years later because we misread a stagnant piece of time.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions regarding the demographic? Will we keep that on regular? Then the next is going to be a placeholder. Every time this year, we have some class sizes that are still in the midst of moving, assume it was not in our report yet, so...
Yeah, so I will give the official update as the time of that regular meeting. Right now, we have approximately 299 classrooms, pre-K through 5th grade. The Texas Education Code cap for pre-K through 4th grade is 22 to 1. There is no cap beyond 4th grade. The district puts in local policy when we're above 25. We do provide a class size overage stipend. As of the present time, out of those classrooms, we have 12 that are over the ratio. One kindergarten, three 3rd grade, five 4th grade and three 5th grade. But again, we monitor this daily and I'll provide the official information as of the time of the board meeting.
So, I know historically, you, y'all sit there and try and work on campuses to make sure that every, every class is equal size on those campuses for each teacher. And so, I know that's a fluid thing here in these first couple of weeks of school, but there will be, we will need to vote on that next week. So, it's a placeholder right now for pre-agenda.
So, what, that the board actually has to vote on is not the waiver. The waiver is a requirement. The board has to vote on the compliance plan that we have to submit. And so, some of the actions that the district continues to seek is we look at balancing classrooms. We do that on a regular basis. In fact, since the beginning of school, we have moved two teachers to balance numbers across the district. One moved from Omar to Holloman and one moved from Glenmore to Holloman to balance numbers. Those are number fun situations. Unfortunately, due to enrollment, they do occur, most often annually. Then also, we continue to seek certified individuals. However, we would rather be over one student or two students with a highly qualified teacher than add a classroom with an uncertified staff member. As you know, in the state of national and state teacher shortages, that is a very hard situation to fill when we already have shortages. And then lastly, the board has approved the class size overage stipend, so we track that weekly for teachers that are over and that's paid each semester.
So, let's keep that as regular just so our parents hear that and... Any questions regarding that? All right, we do need to go into executive session. You got your pencil? Dr., Mr. Gago, it's going to be under 551.074 Personnel, 551.076, which is Security Devices, and 551.082, which is School Children, District Employees, Disciplinary Matters or Complaint. All right, we are back from executive session. We took no votes, took no action. Announcements, we have a pre-agenda board workshop on October 6th, regular board meeting October 21st. And we actually have a regular board meeting next week on the 18th, which is a Thursday. And with that, we are adjourned.